Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie, and I am calling to order this May 20th, 2024 regular meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council. Would you, Ms. Huntington, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon is absent. Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
Mr. Dale?
I'm here.
Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on the agenda is the approval of minutes from the meeting dated May 6, 2024. Any changes or questions about the minutes?
Motion to approve is presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda is the consent agenda, in which we review the bill payments from the previous period. Is there any questions about the bill payments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'm still moved.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Under old business, we have annexation. Mr. Brekovich?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. This item actually goes back to November of 2023, when the city received an application for voluntary annexation for a property near the Tongonoxie Business Park. We've had subsequent conversations, and this item's appeared on numerous Board of County Commissioner agendas, and we still don't have approval on that. We've got, we're under another 30-day extension to try to, as the county has asked us to do, get a deal done on a road maintenance agreement about 222nd Street. So what we thought we would do is take the opportunity, put this back on our public agenda, and have the opportunity to have an open discussion about it. And to maybe foster some of that discussion, there's two things we've done. We've put together a presentation to go through tonight, and one of those items is a timeline that Ms. Kerselik's put together that kind of goes back and shows the regional efforts by both the city and the county. And, you know, going back far enough, we've got KDOT and KTA putting in exit ramps off County Road 1. And so we want to highlight all of that and get through it quickly, but kind of get to the, you know, the, I guess, task at hand that the county's asked us to do, and that's, again, you know, make this determination on a road maintenance agreement. Although, again, I guess I'll put it on the record, we strongly believe that the annexation request and a road maintenance agreement are two separate items and are not related, but we have not been successful in getting the county to agree to that same stipulation. So with that, we'll go to the timeline discussion. I'll turn over to Ms. Kerselik first.
Counsel, as you know, we have been dealing with this matter for some time. The annexation timeline is broken down into prior history, just to show some of the background regarding the business park, how it became part of the city. It was an island annexation back in 2009. There were some interlocal agreements between the city and the county even before that annexation was completed, in which the city and the county were working together to prepare some plans for economic development, talk about zoning in that area, you know, appropriate uses, those kinds of matters. The city did, including the city providing $1.5 million to the county for improvements to County Road 1, which is not, that does not even adjoin city limits now, and didn't at that time either. And then the annexation that was completed toward the end of 2009. And then there, the other part of the timeline is Honey Creek Annexation. So it starts with the initial petition that George mentioned that the city received in March of last year, so over a year ago, and then the multiple efforts that we've made in connection with working with the county. And all of those are detailed. I don't know, George, is there anything else you'd like me to highlight?
Unless you want staff to highlight any particular date, we've got, the rest of the presentation will go through kind of a picture history of outlining that, and if we need specific dates from that, we can pull them from the timeline, but we'll just kind of roll through this. So, again, this is kind of in pictures what's happening. You see in this aerial picture on the, kind of in the middle of the page is the Tongonoxie Business Park, and you see the businesses that are already located there or under construction include Unilock, Hills, and DSM. So the area in the red dashed rectangle is the approximate 14 acres. That was the initial request from the property owner, which became Evergy, who had acquired this and wanted to build a substation. And part of the request for annexation is the county's own planning standards didn't have a way for a utility company, electrical utility company, to build a substation that didn't also require a special use permit. And so as we were discussing future growth of this area, it would just make sense that, because of the proximity of the business park, that this will likely grow and develop with the need to be within the city because of the need for utility connections. And so the county's response to this, which we didn't necessarily disagree with, is only annexing that 14 acres when you can see that larger tract of ground available wouldn't really lead to the proper development of the area. So on the next slide, the city then engaged with the other property owner, and we resubmitted for annexation for nearly, approximately 80 acres of this site, which is, again, contiguous, you know, legal descriptions, property boundaries are all shared. There's one carve-out where there's a single-family home that's owned by a different person that didn't want to be part of that submittal. And so we felt like this met the request by the county of adding the additional property that was adjacent. So when we submitted that, we first encountered what the county gave us feedback as issues or errors in the legal description. So what I'm showing here is the very north tip of this property. So if you look where the DSM symbol is and just to the left up in that corner, this is the highlighted detail of that. What's measured there is approximately 30 feet that the county staff indicated, hey, there's 30 feet that are unaccounted for here that aren't reflecting an accurate legal description, and that this would impede the proper development of the rest of the area. So the three arrows here, I wanted to kind of talk about access points that come off of this 30 feet. So the first one that's on the left-hand side that's pointing back towards the right, that is where Kansas Avenue used to connect to 2440, but KDOT actually removed that access point when the improvements were done for County Road 1, which is identified also as Honey Creek Road and numerous other things, I guess, but the two main ones are County Road 1. So KDOT took that access away. The arrow to the top of the circle that's pointing is to the gravel driveway that feeds into the mobile home park that serves, that's how those residents get to their home. The one on the right-hand side that's angled up towards Kansas Avenue, that's the access point to Kansas Avenue, which is also a county road. It's a gravel road that has just open ditches on either side. When the city platted the business park, we did plat to hap the midway point of Kansas Avenue, again, but just for the stretch of where the Tongonoxie Industrial Park is. So, again, we understood where the county was coming from, but we fundamentally disagreed with the critical nature of this 30 feet. And in fact, we offered just to do kind of an administrative change to the legal description that would have resolved this issue. Again, for a point of emphasis, I've included a black circle that is actually enlarged for the point of this discussion, so you could tell, again, the county made a finding that that 30 feet at the very top where that circle is was going to impede the proper development of that entire flow of property back down towards County Road 1. So, again, we didn't agree with that, but we did offer a way to resolve that. We engaged with the city engineers group at BG, got their surveyor involved to make sure we had the right language. The county, though, indicated, when we re-engaged them, that they found another new, what they'd called an error in the legal description. But for point of clarification tonight, there is no error in the legal description. It's just that the legal description doesn't say what the county staff or county electeds want it to say. And so that what I'm showing in this aerial is the southern portion of 222nd Street. And I know it's very faint. Is there a pointer on this? But it probably doesn't pick up here. So let me, I'll go to the other screen. So you can see the blue dotted line, this is the county GIS, and it represents the existing city limits. So you can see this is the full extent of the depth of the Tongonoxie Industrial Park. So what the county engaged us on is, we had already proposed, because of the original plat for the business park, we already had half of the northern portion of 222nd Street, and we agreed to take the other half of this 50-acre piece that's right across the road, which is part of that 80-acre resubmittal on annexation. But the county was indicating they wanted us to take the full road right-of-way for this entire stretch. And although these two smaller parcels, and this is that 14-acre Evergy piece, were part of this, again, voluntary annexation, so these property owners are submitting voluntary annexation to the city. The city's not trying to acquire their property. They want to develop, and for that, they need to come into the city. But when we come over to the east side of the road, there are hundreds and extending to thousands of acres that are still in the county, and so we didn't feel it was a fair proposal to require the city to take all of that property. And in fact, there were numerous times that the members of the Board of County Commission indicated their desire to force the city to take this property, but acknowledging they had no legal avenue to require us to do that. So, however, they were delaying annexation until we figured out something for this roadway.
Sorry, point of clarification, on your last, when you said, "They would like to force us to take this property," you were referring to the road?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure.
So one additional item that's based on the legal description, again, just for that southern portion of the road, the county approved a replat of that property, and what's highlighted here, and I'm sorry if you can't see it, but it actually says it was approved in December of 2021 by the county. So essentially, the legal description we submitted to the county was off of a plat that the county themselves had approved, and so we assumed that, since it was good three or two years ago, that it would still meet their standards for today. But, again, they're arguing that it's an incorrect legal description. So despite all that, and through these many months, we also went back and re-engaged with BG, the city's engineer, and we created this exhibit that shows what, clearly what the intent was. We, the red lines here represent what are the boundaries of both the annexation and the roads taken with that annexation. So on the north end in that small area, that includes that 30-foot that was originally disputed. I'll call it the northern hap portion of 222nd. It includes the full road right-of-way, so the existing half of the road we had with the original Tongonoxie Business Park plat, as well as that 50 acres. And then we're proposing to make it clean as south of that. We'll just stay with the existing legal description that's part of that plat that was approved by the county in 2021. And, again, to date, the county has not agreed to that. So the items that are still unresolved, and I can go back and address any of those. I don't want to make, I want to make sure I didn't go through those aerials too quickly, and if we wanted to shore up any of that discussion with how they connect to the timeline that Ms. Kerselik put together, we can certainly readdress that. But the items that remain unresolved, again, are first and foremost, from a legal perspective, annexation does not require a road maintenance agreement, which is what the county's desire is, that we come up with some agreement about 222nd Street. And by, what I mean by some type of agreement is a shared cost to make improvements to 222nd Street, which those, there's an engineer's opinion of probable cost that was generated by the county that says that is about a $2.7 million cost. The other side of that argument is that the county then desires, when that project is completed, that the city would take over maintenance of that stretch of road into perpetuity. And what we feel is, there are some open-ended questions there that revolve around what type of grant funding would be made available. At the end of the day, what are the city and counties both required financial input to cost share on this? But I think the bigger question that remains unanswered is, again, from an equitable standpoint, what's the city's equitable share of this road cost? Granted, certainly the business park that's within the city limits has been an impetus of both private development and job creation, which I think the county agrees are great things. And ultimately, part of the reason we received a $4.4 million grant from the county to go develop this property. And we hope that the over half a billion dollars of private capital investment and 200-plus high-paying good benefit jobs that have been created here, that the county feels those are good returns on that investment. What we feel, though, is, from an equity standpoint, even within the city of Tongonoxie Tax District, the county represents the second-largest taxing entity. And to make this a truly fair and equitable transition of required maintenance for this road to just the city of Tongonoxie taxpayers, that we need to get some of these other issues resolved prior to agreeing to how, what the cost share looks like in having permanent responsibility. But, again, without legal hooks requiring us to get that done, we're at a loss as to why the county continues to make findings that prevent the annexation from being completed. And we feel like there's been more than enough good faith effort from the county, both all the staff that have participated, the city attorney, the city engineer, our office, administration, and we're just not making the type of progress that we need to here. I think at the last county commission meeting, Ms. Kerselik asked a great question of the county staff and the county counselor, Mr. Van Paris. You know, the county continues to make these findings that what we're submitting will impede proper growth and development, which I find that interesting considering that the city of Tongonoxie has been the most successful in attracting development, the highest level of private capital investment industrial parks in the history of this county just across the road, and we're responsible for utilities, and we can extend utilities and the other utility companies, including one of the owners that wants to voluntarily annex is Evergy, who wants to build a substation. That substation isn't just for the Tongonoxie Business Park or the city of Tongonoxie. That improves the electrical coverage for the entire southern portion of the county that it services. And so, again, we're at a loss to truly understand it. So Ms. Kerselik's question, back to the Board of County Commissioners and Mr. Van Paris, is, there also has to be proofs of some injury. What irreparable injury does this annexation cause to the county? And up to that point, they've been reluctant or not given us an answer. And so during that meeting, they suggested it was because it creates questions about access to property. So what we clarified for the county commissioners at their last meeting is, well, in addition to inviting county staff to pre-development meetings that city staff have with owners or developers that are interested in developing properties, we would also honor that whatever the county standards or county requirements for access are on this southern portion, the city would be okay with that. We'll build it to the county standards. So in my opinion, they identified the issue as access. We've offered a clarification on the record, and we can put that in writing to them if we need to, that we'll build it to their standards and specifications. I feel like we've resolved what they've identified as annexation issues. Again, the history of problems with legal descriptions, all the way to this identified most recent answer to the injury question. So we wanted, I requested, and the mayor agreed, to make this part of this discussion tonight for public record, to say, here, again, here's the history, here's the efforts that have been made to date. Again, it's property owners that own property in Leavenworth County that are wanting to voluntarily annex into the city, and the city's willing, and we can meet the standards, again, that we are required of us to accept annexation, which includes extension of utilities. We can do all of that. And we're more than willing to engage with the county on a discussion about a road maintenance agreement and a funding agreement for improving 222nd Street, similar to what Ms. Kerselik identified, that the city of Tongonoxie agreed back in '09 via the interlocal agreement to give funding into the County Road 1 improvement. And that, the city entered to that agreement with the county before the city ever asked to annex the property that we've already developed. And so I think I'm interested to hear the discussion from the policymakers at the city here of how you would direct staff to approach the county staff to try to get some resolution to this. And with that, Ms. Kerselik, I don't know if you had anything else you wanted to add?
I would add that from the last meeting, it does sound, I mean, so where things stand now is June 12th is the next board meeting to discuss this. I do know that the Board of Commissioners would like to have an agreement in place. We talked about that on the record last month, or last week, in saying that there's just a lot of open issues. We don't know how much funding is going to come through in terms of the grants. And so it's hard to get into a full-blown agreement. And so, you know, preferably, of course, we would prefer that they proceed with the annexation finding we had committed on the record, that we would continue working with the county toward an agreement for this road. But they do see these issues as inextricably intertwined. I agree that legally they are not. There is not a legal requirement for a road maintenance agreement, but it would be great for the city and the county to be good partners. Again, it looks like they were at some point, and we'll be, hopefully, we can just move forward and come to some sort of an agreement. We had talked about the possibility of maybe having a staff, you know, administration person from each, you know, city and county, and then an elected official, perhaps, meet to talk about this, but we're just really trying to figure out the way forward, like George said. We know the county wants an agreement. I do think, you know, we could, it would be helpful to know and to have direction on what really it would be equitable for the city's share. And then if the grant funding doesn't meet that, you know, I think we could write an agreement that would address, you know, then the parties just have to come back to the table if the grants don't come through.
Well, I'll just say, the citizens of Tongonoxie are residents of this county as well, and they have been dis-served by their Board of County Commissioners, who have placed politics above seeking the best interests of the community. A substation built, put by Evergy will not just be of a benefit to the city citizens, but also the local county residents as well. That starts specifically with our own county, area, the county's representation on that, county commissioners, but also the other ones as well. I would just urge our staff to continue working to come to an agreement, though I agree with them that one should not be necessary to get the annexation approved.
Anyone else?
Go ahead, please.
It seems like the annexation, annexation, the voluntary annexation by one of our folks who owns land in Leavenworth County should not be held up. We've re-approached it legally several times based on requests at the county level. Seems like they're really two separate issues to me. It kind of seems like it's pay-to-play, or like, you do this for us before, we'll do this for you. But the thing we're asking to do initially is something that's not out of bounds. It's a voluntary annexation, and we meet the legal requirements. Also, I went to the Leavenworth County Commission meeting on April 3rd, and the agenda item just right before ours had to do with land in that same area, and it was a zoning issue, and somebody needed to, was requesting to rezone their property kind of out there by County Road 1. And this planning staff was suggesting, suggesting that the county commissioners were not, they didn't want them to approve the rezoning. But I wrote this down because I was, you know, anticipating our city issue was coming up next. It was like, if they want to build houses and they own it, like, why not? And they went ahead and they approved the rezoning, and I was like, that's great. I mean, that's kind of what you'd want somebody in the county to do, if they're representing you, to like, think, well, this is a landowner, and they want to do something, so let them do it. And I thought about our landowner who wants to annex into the city. I was like, well, this is good news. They're going to let this landowner annex. And of course, it didn't go like that. It was a very confusing meeting. So I don't know, I've just been pretty disappointed in my exposure to this whole process. So I thought it was nice, George, that you're sharing this, items of intertwining annexation with the road 222nd Street, but I really think it's unnecessary. I just would like some direct action on what we've asked for.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Mr. Donnelly?
First of all, George, thank you for putting all this together. Is the, is the slides that you presented, they're not in our package, are they available for? I mean, obviously, they're in the public, so they're public.
We did, I'm sorry, we were finalizing it, so it didn't make the packet, but we can update the packet after the meeting tonight to include the slides.
Okay. Just to make sure that gets into the public so it can be readily seen, because that, a lot of people here in the area know that area down there or up and down those streets quite often and know what's going on. I think it's appropriate, if we're unable to get any satisfaction with getting to an agreement, to get, as was stated, I think, George, you may have stated it, to get, to get a staff member from both entities and then a couple of elected officials together in a room and try to get it resolved so we can really understand each other's side. I think that's important. As I've said many times before, that this is not the last annexation that Tongonoxie Basin's anything anybody will have. And then we need to get it worked out today, because there's going to be another one tomorrow, and then there's going to be another one after that, and there's going to be another one after that. And there's got, and it can't be that difficult to work through and get done. So if we can't get this one done, how do we get the next one done? Or are we dead in the water for eternity or perpetual, whatever? Who knows? So I think it's important that we do get it resolved by the, that June meeting that was sent out and try to get something worked out, so we can start focusing on long-term benefits to the city and to the county. And again, I think, Mr. Partridge, say, we are, I live in the city of Tongonoxie, and I'm a taxpayer in the city of Tongonoxie, but I also pay taxes to the county. And so I think we all have an obligation to perform for our taxpayers. And I believe we are trying to do our part. If we are missing something, I, as an elected official, I want to hear what we're missing. I hear George's side of the story, and you see it. It's in writing. It's in documentation. But if we're missing something as a body, that's our obligation to find it. I don't believe we are, but I'm anxious to hear what we are missing from the other side directly. And we did hear the, at the last meeting, which was appropriately put out, that access management was an issue. I think that's a very minor, minor issue that can be resolved simply. I'm not sure why we can't get to that one yet, but, I mean, that was the first I've heard of that, that... heard of that, that the, the way you get on and off of that road isn't, but that's important in anything. It doesn't matter if I'm developing, which I've developed 10 phases of this town and filed Platts, and you have to have access and proper access. And you work with the city and the body to figure out what that proper access is, as a developer. And so, I know that's important, but I don't know that it would impede the annexation. So if that's the only issue that we have, we can get through that. If there are other issues, we need to know what they are so we can address them. And it's pretty hard to address them. And so, if we're missing something from staff, it's our obligation to make sure we get that information, so we make appropriate decisions, not just for today and this one, but for everyone that comes on from here on out. So, that's my nickel's worth.
And if the Board of County Commissioners don't have the same information that we have, that creates a problem too. I mean, they ask why a couple of different times during the meeting on the, on the weekend, sorry, last week, and I thought it was for economic development. That's why we were building, that's why we were building on County Road One, and that's why we were looking to develop down there, and that's why they brought in Tyson. That's the why. But I don't know what answers what data they don't have, what intel that they don't, they don't have.
When I think after months of working on this, I kind of jumped right into the things we wanted to talk about, but one of the things I failed to mention at the beginning was, why is even the county, why are we having to approach the county for this annexation? And it's because it has to do with the fact that this is what's considered an island annexation. So, that property's not adjacent or contiguous to the city limits proper. And even though the business park has been annexed since 2009, it was also an island annexation. So to get the final approval on annexation, we have to approach the county in the method we've done. I guess one other thing I'll mention that I've heard is, because I think part of this discussion was, well, you know, what are we missing that maybe the county is viewing this differently? And you probably recall, the city council had a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. Over the course of the last two years, they've tried to go out to meet with each city's elected body to discuss joint goals and things of that nature. And one of the things that I was surprised to hear during that was how adamant the county commissioners were to just kind of resolving themselves of anything to do with reinvestment or additional investment in this area. And some of the comments were, led me to believe that they were upset that the city, and I believe this was the terminology, the city just is putting all these users in the business park, and we're not aware, we're not prepped to go make the infrastructure improvements. And so, as we were putting this timeline together, I was kind of surprised, because I didn't recall it immediately, but we found communication from back in 2017 when the county and the state were doing a major development that they wanted to put in the south part of the county, and KDOT and the county staff had identified 222nd Street as a chip-and-seal road with multiple layers that needed improvement. And so, I have a hard time believing that just because we, the city did development agreements with Hills, DSM, and Unilock, that those users somehow contributed to the mass deterioration of this roadway, and that it was a surprise to everyone. In fact, I've heard them mention that we should have created a benefit, the city should have created a benefit district on a county road, and they certainly would have done that. It's like, well, honestly, if you folks wanted that, you had six, seven years to put that in place before this would have ever materialized, and you didn't. And so, again, I'm not trying to sling arrows or point anything, but it's just been a very frustrating point. I feel like we've had to use a lot of taxpayer dollars to try to explore how we get voluntary annexation completed. And I'm not dismissing if the county has concerns, I just, I feel very strongly that the concerns they've stated, time after time, we've resolved. And I think there's just an ulterior motive here that we will never resolve, or if we are forced to, it won't be in a fashion that's fair to the city of Tongonoxie taxpayers. And so, I'm certainly open to reaching out and asking city staff and a small group with county staff, and open invitation to representatives of their elected body, and certainly if anyone on the city council wants to volunteer. I think that could be a very beneficial discussion to have, and we'd be willing to work through Ms. Kirstelik. I know at one point, there was a little bit of criticism back to staff because I had suggested that since both the county and the city are represented by attorneys, and I'm a stickler for document control, and I wanted the attorneys to be the contact points to make sure everybody was on the most recent version of whatever we were discussing. And I guess, after the fact, I found out that that was offensive to some of our colleagues on the county staff, that they didn't like that. But I still believe that's the right method to distribute information. I mean, that's how we approach anything, when both parties are represented, you work through the attorneys. And so, but again, I think we're under this now less than 30 days to get something resolved by June 12th, and I'm game to try any approach that we haven't tried since November to get this done.
That's good. Chris says it a lot, and he's right. Tongonoxie has always led, and Tongonoxie has to lead in this one again, and we're going to have to be the, and though I think we already have been the big kids, you know, I think it's, we need to redouble our efforts in that regard.
Thanks for putting all of this together. I mean, I think Chris's idea, just to have a couple staff and a couple elected officials get together and try to hammer this out.
I appreciate the time and the discussion. We will certainly reach out to our counterparts at the county and see if we can't get that arranged in short order. Again, thank you for your consideration on this item tonight.
Thank you. All right. Did we have anybody to speak up tonight? Or anybody to speak tonight?
No signups, Mayor.
No signups, all right, thanks. We'll move on to new business. Public hearing, consideration of right-of-way vacation requests submitted by Pat Sparks and Cheryl Sparks. Mr. Brackovich?
Sure. I can introduce the item. So, our hope had been to have an executed agreement for some additional right-of-way. We need to get started on the Fourth Street Bridge replacement. We have an additional meeting with that property owner actually scheduled for this week on Thursday afternoon, where we hope to get final closure. However, we had anticipated having that agreement done in time for this meeting, so we had to do our publication and advertisement for the public hearing. So the request would be tonight, Mayor, if you wouldn't mind opening the public hearing and then simply continuing this item to our next meeting, which would be June 3rd, I believe. And by then, we hope to have those right-of, those right-of-way acquisition documents completed.
I assume that gives them enough time to?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have any issues. We're kind of, we are in agreement on terms. I think they just had some specific questions about some of the legalese and verbiage that's used, and, you know, because all these documents have to contain legal descriptions of the property that's to be acquired. And we didn't realize until late in the game that they wanted to speak directly to the bridge engineer and the city attorney about those items. And so, that's what we've got scheduled for Thursday afternoon.
Okay.
Do they have representation?
They do not. And we've asked them if they would prefer to get that, and they've indicated not, no, they just have questions.
Understood. Thank you.
Yeah.
So then I'll open up the public hearing for consideration of right-of-way vacation requests submitted by Pat Sparks and Cheryl Sparks. Is there anyone who wants to speak during the open meeting? I see, I see no one, so we will close the public meeting.
No.
We will continue the public hearing until, what was the date?
June 3rd.
June 3rd, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Item B, consider ordinance number 1520, consider approval of amended special use permit for Tongi Tykes LLC located at 707 East Fourth Street, Tongonoxie, Kansas 660886. Now, Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. This item, it comes before you after consideration by the city's planning commission of the amended special use permit request. As you might recall, about two years ago, the Tongi Tykes LLC's submittal for a daycare use in historic business district zone property located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Fourth Street and Main Street, came before the planning commission and the city council, and it was approved for a special use permit for a period of two years. So, coincidentally with the reconsideration of the special use permit at the conclusion of that two-year period, the applicant, in this case, approached city staff with a proposal for expanding the use, which currently had occupied, previously had occupied only the northern portion of the building subdivided for daycare use, to expand to utilize the entirety of the building for similar purposes but slightly different. So the expansion of an older age group above daycare age for after-school and summer care types of utilization. This was a good opportunity for the city planner to work with the applicant, to review their submittal. As you can see, included in the draft agreement that the city attorney provided for us, there were conditions associated with the planning commission's approval of this item, a recommendation of approval, and those included conditions A through G. I won't list all of them, but I just want to point out that a couple items were that the operation would be limited to no more than 75 children, about 50 in the daycare use, and 25 in the before and after-school and summer full-time program. Some other considerations were discussed at the planning commission, including parking opportunities to alleviate kind of the demand on the parking. And there were also discussions about positive outcomes possible with the downtown planning study that's currently underway and will be enacted at a later date. What the planning commission did recommend for approval was, again, conditions A through G associated with the staff report, as well as a term of five years until the next renewal consideration, which is a common practice in these types of planning items, to give the applicant who hasn't had demonstrated issues, noticed either by city staff or the public, to have a little bit longer-term agreement or opportunity under the special use permit. If there's any issues that do arise in that five years, staff or the city council or planning commission can initiate reconsideration of the SUP at that time. So, we don't have any concerns from staff to illustrate for this item, and do recommend approval of the ordinance as drafted, but we're happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you. Mr. Porter, is there, are there any questions?
Yeah, I want to talk about the parking. I think what they're doing now is good, and I think the drop-off works well, especially, you know, this is my neck of the woods here. It's like my intersection, Fourth and Main. And there's a lot of traffic just because of the way that high school opens before the elementary school. There's a lot of southbound traffic in the morning on Fourth Street. And I think that the preschool has done a very good job of having their drop-off and pickup and everything not interfere with that. My only question I have is, are we allowing parking on the northeast corner of that intersection of Fourth and Main, AKA their intersection, to the curb there on that side? I know we took it away from, on the other side. We painted it red. Is, are they allowed to park to the curb there? I don't remember, but I will tell you, it is a difficult intersection, as you and I have often talked. It's a difficult intersection from either side on Main Street, particularly from the south side. But even from the north side, it's very difficult to see traffic coming down Fourth, eastbound traffic, no, excuse me, westbound traffic down Fourth Street, because if any cars are parked out in front. Is there no parking at, all the way to the curb? The farther cars are parked back against the curb, the better the line of sight, and that problem is eliminated. Anyway, I'm just curious, have we talked to them about potentially, if we haven't, painting a little bit of it red, a no parking, like a one-car length or whatever it would be, 30 feet, whatever, we think's appropriate so that you can see? But is it, I don't, I don't remember, I don't think there's currently no parking on that side of the intersection.
I don't believe there is either. We have not discussed that specifically, but in general, we've had a discussion with them about parking, drop-off, pickup. But the city always has the right to revisit things like sightline impediments and be able to address that at any time. But certainly, we can address that if we think we need to be proactive to preserve kind of that sightline integrity of that intersection. We can take a look at it. I know on the other side of the street, I think we're also, is there a fire hydrant on that side at some point that we're trying to create a buffer around? But I think it's a good point, Mr. Partridge, and it's certainly something we've discussed numerous times with the applicant, again, in terms of parking and pickup drop-offs.
Yeah, as long as we're, as long as we have some flexibility to do something about that, then I, then I don't have any issues with the, with the special use permit. I would say this, I'm thinking about it, unrelated to the permit issue, but related to that intersection, I know there probably wouldn't be much, what would it take to get a stop sign on Fourth Street for that, if we decided it was necessary? Oh, because I will say, from the other side, it's absolutely almost, it's, there are some mornings it feels like it's impossible to cross because your head just has to constantly move, because people park in front of flashbacks to the curb, to the very intersection, and you have parking on the other side to the intersection. So it's very, very, very difficult. And you, and you have so many cars flowing in the morning to and from the schools, so you just have to, and sometimes you just take years taking a blind leap there, and just hoping you don't hit anybody. So we either need to get people off that curb, give a little bit of distance, or we need to put up a stop sign, in my opinion. To put up a stop sign, what's required?
Well, we would need to do some work with our transportation engineer to determine, you know, typically on a stop sign, you want enough stacking capacity to, we have to have some analysis to know what the traffic count is, to know how many cars need to be able to stay in the queue and release off the queue. Are you, and I'm making an assumption that you're talking about westbound traffic on Fourth Street that's coming from Pleasant back towards the Main Street, fourth and Main intersection?
Either direction, either direction is very tough, on going north or southbound on Main Street. It's tougher if you're going northbound than if you're coming from the high school. The other issue is, you do get backed up quite a bit from all those people at the high school trying to go down. So there is a line sometimes, maybe a dozen cars deep, around 7:30, 5:00, 7:40 on a school day. But it does do a pretty good job of clearing out. I'm amazed at, like, it's really only about 10 minutes where it's really backed up there, and then it kind of typically finds its way through. So maybe there isn't enough traffic. The easiest solution is to not let people park all the way to the curb, as I mentioned, but anyway, okay. Different subject, different day. I don't want to take up any of this time.
Okay.
Anyone else have any comment or question?
One quick question. Ms. Kirstelik, you drafted this one? So, we don't have, KDHE controls most of what we're dealing with, and you're comfortable that none of this is overstepping anything that's within KDHE?
Yes.
They have to be approved, anything.
KDHE has a control of both.
Yeah.
Just a few things that look like maybe we were getting into their business.
In the staff report too, I think they reviewed a lot of the KDHE requirements. They, the applicant did appear at the planning commission and did address the license requirement, so yes, I'm comfortable with it.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1520 to amend the special use permit for Tongi Tykes LLC located at 707 East Fourth Street, Tongonoxie, Kansas.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C, consider approval of water park facility event Float Fest organized by the Tongonoxie Recreation Commission.
You've been so patient.
Yes, thank you.
I don't know if you remember from last year, I think this was the first time I came to talk to you guys ever, was the approval- to talk to you guys ever, was the approval of this event. It was a huge hit. About 250 people came to it last year, so we're going to do it again. It'll be basically the same as last year with a couple minor improvements, including decorations, and then the hiring of special performers at the event. So I'm just hoping for your approval to do this event at the Water Park again.
All right. Do you have any questions, Council?
I have four little granddaughters that fight you for that little blow-up doll.
There will be multiple at the event, so.
Anyone else?
You don't got a dog park update for me, do you?
Unfortunately, I do not. I know Brad got some really good news this morning about it.
Oh, that's good enough for me.
Oh, bad.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the Water Park Facility Event, Float Fest, organized by the Tongonoxi Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Dale first. Thank you, Mr. Dale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for everything you do.
I love hearing 250 kids, that's just great.
That's great. City manager, agenda?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. There's one item here, it's the April financial report. We are asking to move this item to June 3rd. I think in the seven years that Mr. Porter and I have been here, this is the second time we're asking to bump this item. We just didn't quite get it completed to the point of where the report was ready to submit. But as long as that's okay with you, we'll, we'll give you an update on June 3rd.
Can I just make a suggestion that you just email it? Or include it in next packet? We don't have to make it an item we discuss? That's just, that's just my two cents.
Can we share it, if it's a future agenda item, if we share an email? Because I, I mean, if someone requested it in advance, we'd give it to them anyway.
You don't have to put it on the agenda next item or whatever, you just...
I think we can include it on the agenda, but we can give it to you in advance as soon as we get it done. Is that okay?
Okay, I think.
And I'll check the code and confirm, too.
Okay. But I do have one item that's not listed here that I did want to give you an update on, and it is related to the dog park, Mr. Partridge. So in ongoing communication, one of the items that was requested is that the city would waive water tap fees. And so I agreed to do that because it was under my limit of decisions I could make. But I did want you to make, be aware of it because it was a little over $5,000. And typically, I think sometimes folks hear that we waived a fee. The way those, a part of that fee includes reimbursement because the city goes out and purchases that equipment, and so part of those tap fees are so that the city can reimburse their costs. So it's not like we're just waiving a hypothetical fee. We are going to pay about $5,200 towards this project. But I know that the discussion we've had, that there's been overwhelming support for the project, and we wanted to keep it going. And I believe, hopefully, the Rec Commission will be making a decision on how to move forward this week at their meeting, so. And that's it, Mayor, I don't have any other items.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Ms. Kirstelich?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Mayor Proppa, agenda?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City council, agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize our, the Tongonoxi High School forensics team for winning the state championship. Mr. Harold makes it look easy, but I assure you, it is not, and it's just another one, another string of, long string of success for that program at that school. So congratulations to them.
We'll try to get him, we'll try to get him in here sometime. And finally, Mayor, agenda? I don't have anything, so, Mr. Dale?
Yeah, after almost three hours, I am eager to make a motion to adjourn.
That's the most I heard you talk tonight, Jim.
Is there, is there...
We don't have a second, she's not here.
Oh, second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See you in a couple weeks.